All with the word of prayer. Our most precious heavenly Father, we thank thee for these assembled here today to do the work in Jefferson County. Dear Lord, we're ever thankful and we're grateful for this group of individuals that have banded together to oversee the workings of Jefferson County, Alabama. Dear Lord, we thank for all of our staff and thank you for them and thank you for the good help that you have given us. And we, as we are about to embark on this meeting today, we ask that you give us the wisdom, the strength, the courage, and the guidance to do the right things for the people of Jefferson County. Dear Lord, we ask that you keep us safe, that you touch those who have been afflicted through the COVID crisis, touch them with your healing hands, and give them the strength and courage and the guidance to move forward. Your Lord keeps us God's and protects us. We ask you same in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, one, thank you very much. Let's begin. Sheriff, do you want to, if I step outside, you're a busy man, if I let you go first? You normally come out of this three agenda. Would you allow me to go ahead and do any press?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Furkis, the Lord and commissioners, I am going this morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us, Sheriff Mark Patway, we have a presentation that we would like to show you this morning. We have three requests. First request, we have looking at our vehicles. And I have my companion here who's already believed, he's gonna show you a presentation with the vehicles. Also, we have a presentation also for a visiting link that goes with the helicopter, going down with the helicopter. And lastly, have a request for COVID-19 spraying at the county jail. So those are the three things that we're coming this morning to request a county commission. And we have our companion first to give you a brief explanation of the presentation right here, maybe as before this morning.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners, the Lord and Commissioners. I thank you for this brief opportunity to discuss it with you. Yes, we'll be very brief. Just a brief outline, just want to talk to you a little bit about our statistics of what we've been doing for the last couple of years. We'll talk to you a little bit about the miles traveled and doing so, talk to you about our vehicle life cycle, the history of vehicle purchases within sheriff's office in any manner. So COVID has been an unprecedented year for everyone. We're no different. But as we can see from our statistics, we still have to work and we still work quite a bit. So even though 2019 to 2020, the calls may decrease a little bit, but patrol still answered over 100,000 calls. So that's a lot of traveling by vehicle to go to every corner of this county to serve our citizens. We see patrons were still being served to the tune of about 50,000, like there's deficits in cars, going to businesses and residences to make sure that the court processes are served. Warrants were served to the tune of about 16,000 in 2020. So these numbers show that 2019, no COVID, 2020 COVID, throughout, we're still performing and needing the vehicles as a platform in which to perform. In 2020, we traveled over 5.8 million. That's just looking at these divisions right here. That's a lot of traveling. That's a lot of traveling in our vehicles. And that's wear and tear involved in that. So the vehicles do not stay new forever. They do wear out and they do break down. So right now, we come forward to where we are as a sheriff's office fleet right now. So right now, we have 38 vehicles that have greater than 150,000 miles. And as a vehicle ages to that point, it's prone to breakdown. And as our vehicles break down, that affects our ability to respond to 911 calls to assist our citizens. That affects overtime for us. That affects backlog and overtime for the fleet as they try to repair our vehicles. And the next thing I'm going to show you here, though, is that in the next mileage range of 125 to 150, there are 63 vehicles that are in that category. These vehicles accrue mileage on an annual basis. If you average out all of the deficits, about $12 to $15 a mile per year. So these vehicles deal quickly through these ranges and they build up mileage just very quickly and wear and tear. At sheriff's office, we learn to maximize the use of the vehicles. So from the beginning to end, we continue with move our vehicles from division to division. We place our newest vehicles in the patrol division because they're the 911 response. We want them to get there. We want them to always get there safely. And as the vehicles age, they will move into other divisions where the vehicle demands may not be so heavy. But in the end, it takes about eight to 10 years for a vehicle to cycle through. And by the time it gets to that eight to 10-year mark, it's completely worn out. This is a brief history of, this is the brief history of the sheriff's office and where we have been since 2003 with the purchase of vehicles. And you can see in 2003, that was the first large purchase of Crown Victorians. And we go from there to 2004. And in those, in the beginning year of 2004, 2005, there were other vehicles purchased along with that as well, unmarked vehicles. But we see when we get to 2006, there's a steady decline. And that steady decline, of course, matches the county's financial issues. Until finally, we get to 2018, where we only purchased four new vehicles. So as the mileage metric I showed you before, when deficits are putting 15,000 to 20,000 miles per year on a vehicle, these 2003 vehicles at that time were pretty much over. So during that time, we went to a refurbishment program. And from 2009 to 2015, 165 vehicles were refurbished. Those vehicles did not do well. They were worn out. But it was still just a way to keep things going. So as we look at 2013 to present, we see that in 2013, funding became available. 42 Tahoe's were purchased. 2014, there were 25 unmarked vehicles purchased. 2015, we go to a stage where there were 59 Tahoe's purchased. 2016, we see 30 down there, but there were also unmarked purchases as well. So from 2015 all the way up until 2018, there were level purchases of about 60 vehicles per year. That put an incredible confusion into the sheriff's fleet. Things got better and things started to turn around. So we get to 2019 and we dropped to 15 vehicles. And we're at 2020, 27. And we're here today possibly with 25. And I can tell you, from my experience from the past to now, 25, 27, and 15 is headed downhill. It's not going to help our situation moving forward, considering that we put at least 5.8 million miles per year on these vehicles. So just to balance and show you the difference between 2003, 2010, and 2013 to present, we're kind of sort of on the same trajectory. So right here in 2021, we have the opportunity perhaps to put some more funding toward this and send the numbers back up. We believe that the regular replacement of at least one-seventh of the fleet, of the sheriff's fleet, of the regular assigned vehicles, would bring us and sustain us at the level of operation that we need today. If we do this, it's already proven from 2015 to 2018 that this works. So we submit to you, we would like to see that happen this year. We're a little bit behind now, but still, if we can accomplish this, we will make sure that the sheriff's fleet is sustainable and that it will move into the future. We won't go back to the way it was from 2009 to 2013. So that concludes that. Are there any questions? Anything I can answer or clarify?
Yes, sir. How many vehicles do you have that has less than 75,000 miles? I know we saw a chart that says 5,000.
Less than, I have to get that number for you, but first of all, the remainder of the fleet will have less.
How many total units do you have?
There are about 502, including all of the specialized vehicles.
How many, how many, of that majority of those are patrol vehicles, though? We're talking about replacement?
The main, our main concern is replacing patrol vehicles because they're the first responders and we want to make sure that they get to their calls effectively.
How many of those?
We have 173 persons that are generally assigned to patrol. But then along with that, we have 63 school resource officers and some of those officers, the non-contracted, receive these types of vehicles as well. And then we have deficits in our warrant division. They travel great distances going from throughout the state and from state to state, picking up people on outstanding warrants. And so we always want those deficits in the newest cars because we don't want them breaking down with bridges in the car.
I have five more. You had the 5.8 million miles last year. Is there, do you have any other data to kind of show that that's a trend? There's greater usage or is that just the one year that you have the data from?
That's just, that's just one snapshot and that's a fairly accurate estimate. I mean, we can, we can go back and we can get some more estimates.
Just curious, I wish you'd have the direction. I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions.
So I had, I had, first of all, I got a question and then I have to say this. This is a current funding requirement, right?
Yes.
All right, so let me, let me just say this especially. I can only just speak from observation to me, I think, because we know that criminal activity has increased tremendously. I would think that we would probably see more of a surge in the use of the vehicles when we're talking about mileage as opposed to what we probably did a year ago. Some of that is attributed to the pandemic, when you think, because of the current state of the economy. But I will tell you this, which I have been very thankful for, is that I'm seeing more of consistency as it relates to those things that we as a commission have asked for. I do want to thank sheriff publicly because we had testing sites. We're now going into another phase of hopefully being able to properly provide vaccination sites. And you all have been there. I know that even with the various food distribution sites that we had, I mean, I'm not thinking at all that this is going to be something that, in my opinion, is coming for free. Just because you all are there doesn't mean that that's not the case. I was interested in what you talked about, the sanitization about the jails. I know that when I was asking Dr. Wilson in terms of where COVID is probably more susceptible, and according to what he told me, it was the housing community, obviously inmates, and then in our senior communities. And so is there for any reason particularly that we didn't continue on with the cleaning and sanitization of the jail?
Sheriff mentioned that, so we can answer that.
Yes.
The funding that we had in place was cut off and we needed the continued funding because we still have a jail that's going on. COVID is still present. And we cannot afford to take these individuals to the hospital. We do not have enough room for quarantine. If we can keep the place sanitized as much as possible, we can do a great job right there at our facility. So we need continued funding for sanitizing in both our jails.
And let me ask you this, and this is more for you, Mr. Patelz, because some of the complaints that I've gotten, remember the last meeting that we had, I mentioned about there were some employees and talking about hazardous fate and their concern for going over to the jail, right? Do you perceive that this is a part of that sheriff that for those employees that have that concern, that this would aid in that? Because I brought that up at the last meeting in terms of where we were as it relates to employees having that particular concern.
Well, it can go both ways, but my biggest concern is the inmates contracted the virus. If it gets into inmate population, it will definitely be hard to control. And we're trying to make sure that that does not happen. We're doing everything as much as possible to make sure that that does not happen. That's why we want to continue funding for the sanitizing for both of the jails that we have. And that can help keep down the virus because once it gets into the population, it's going to spread. And that's not something that we're going to be able to control. We do not have the room for quarantine, nor do we have the manpower to be able to take those inmates to the hospital. And the hospitals do not have the room to be able to house those inmates that we have either.
So one last question. You said that you did, you ran out, was it one out of money? Or CARES Act money expired? What happened?
We had done an emergency contract for the sanitation to sanitize the jail. That contract expired when the CARES Act money expired. Now, there've been some changes in the rules and now we can, you know, they can ask for reimbursements through FEMA today to get those monies reimbursed on the sanitation.
So when we're talking about reimbursement, but they still have to have funds available in their budget in order for them to be able to, as a matter of fact, the company, is this the lowest bid in order to get this down? So then how will they pay for it if it's not in their budget? Because then that would be considered an amendment to the budget.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay, what I'm saying is, do they have, as in the sheriff's office right now, do they have available funds that they can accommodate in order to pay for any sanitizing or any other needs that they're talking about right now that's related to COVID?
I don't have any direct knowledge of their budget and what they're doing.
Okay. And so, and I know that that's what the president has tried to refrain from, which is the reason why I'm saying, if there's a reimbursement, you must first put up the payment in order to be reimbursed. So that being the case, and we certainly don't want COVID to spread in a, for lack of better words, in a environment where we know it can fester.
And I know, you know, today or tomorrow, Congress is going to finish voting on the package that's before Congress. There will be money in there, you know, we have FEMA. So I think that it's not going to be a problem to continue that sanitation of the jail.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, but where would the funding come from?
Well, we need to work with our CFO.
Because that's, that's my concern is that we can, we can, we can say what we, what we need here, but you got to first have the ability to spend before you can be reimbursed. So you all got a plan? I can tell you all coming up with a plan? Okay.
Let me ask this. What is?
Well, hold on, Joe. If you don't mind, I want to know where's the funding source. Because the sheriff and his department need to know.
I would like to ask, how much are we talking about? Because we're talking about a funding source that's been cut off, but I don't have, you know, how much is the big cost?
No, we, we had a company that was doing it at a very good rate. And we can continue with the company that we had. It was doing a very good job, very good rate. They offered a very low rate and if we can continue using them, I believe it will not hurt the county budget if we can continue to pull up against the government.
How much is the low rate?
Do you, do you know exactly how much the rate was?
All right, $60,000 a month.
$60,000 a month?
Right, but the new bid changes that.
To what?
Probably $60,000 a week.
A week?
The county did a bid, but the vendor is one of the winning bidders, one of three winning bidders, and they agreed to continue at the original rate. So they would do it for $60,000, continue.
Yeah, and what I just talked to Angel about is we're now halfway through a budget cycle. Is that there's control in accounts that you can go up into and utilize a bunch. And before the end of the fiscal year, we could go back and reimburse for whatever was needed when the funding source becomes available to the federal government. So I don't think you would require any type of a budget amendment right now to get that done. But it would require one at some point when the funding becomes available. So, you know, the money, the bottom line, there's plenty of money there.
No, I got what you're doing. That's the main, the main thing I want to be.
Also, the new money coming in, you know.
No, I, right, and when that becomes available, I was only concerned that what we don't want to have is for it to stop. The services stop and then we have a spread in our jail. Do you see what I mean? So if you're telling me that we, if dollars are there and can then, because you don't have to do a budget amendment, not based on what we're talking about in that scenario, yeah, because it's already there. That's all I'll say. And so I can appreciate that.
And when the funding comes in.
Right, then we'll do the amendment and already do the reimbursement. Yeah, no, I got it.
Was this, was this in place when y'all did your last budget?
We were dealing with COVID at this time.
Right, right.
We could not, but we did have to make a meeting, amend what we were doing to add it to protect those that were incarcerated in the county jail.
So let me, let me ask this question too. So we passed a jail component of it. Let's get back to the fleet part of it now. So being that you're asked, is this like a lease purchase or this is to purchase?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so one thing, and I think I'll take this liberty here just because it just stuck out in my mind about the, and I was telling the joke this yesterday, it still was kind of terrible over there in Fort Lauderdale. I, you know, I want to tell us, you know, so, but here's my point. So we have had several, I call them catastrophes, within the past 12 months. And so when we talk about vehicle or fleet issues that we're trying to address today, would you say that the use of those based upon these catastrophes made it more or less useless than you've seen? That's in addition to the pandemic?
Not for sure right now. We can go back and look at the numbers. But I do know that we've had an increase in domestic violence. So we're just responding to domestic violence calls have increased the number of calls that we've had and increased our response. So we have to respond to these domestic violence calls all over the county here. And we have these smaller cities in which we have been.
Assisting?
Yes, so we.
So that's why I'm talking about these catastrophes because I saw that the county had a large presence when I came through Fort Lauderdale.
That's correct.
And it wasn't just for one day. What I, what I observed is that they were there basically until the roads reopened. And then even since then with the cleanup, because like I was telling Joe yesterday, that you still had some valuables in the area. I didn't tell him that, but I was just saying, I didn't realize that certain things were still in a really bad state, so you got to protect that. And I applaud the county for that effort, but I really liked the idea at some point that if you share with the commission, I had a lot of questions when we went in the helicopter. And I think it was just a small amount of money that was being said that this can be used when we have these catastrophic type of incidents. And then whenever in the right time, if you bring it up, I'd be interested in the commission hearing it because I didn't know we could do all of that with this one air transportation.
That is the next item we will be talking about, but we did.
I don't want to get ahead of you, I'm sorry.
We did help Fort Lauderdale out to the fullest extent that we could. And we had a very, very large presence there. Search and rescue was immediately done. We were there to help keep out looters and those that were coming there to scam the residents of Fort Lauderdale.
And you arrested someone while you were, and that's what they told the one?
Immediately, it's starting.
Someone was arrested along the lake, not the lake, but there was a creek, Jerry? There was a creek path, domestic violence case occurred. I mean, I was shocked at that. We stopped the rescue effort to get him and go back, but okay, that's it. I don't want to say anything.
And clarifying these automobiles that we've got, they're, they're holding 25 farms and that's what was available for this year. They, they stopped production on them, so right now that 25 is really all that's there and that is available to be utilized. And I think Mr. Knight is going to come forward at the next meeting, those are on hold. Sheriff, you were aware of that?
Yes, sir.
And so that's, so this was just kind of a formal announcement. Had we not already verified these cars, we would not be able to get them today. So these were gone for that. And of course, we will continue to work to make sure that's done. What's the next thing, Sheriff?
The Dowling for the helicopter, he's going to do a presentation about the Dowling for helicopter.
This will be a full presentation on paper.
While we're, will you, will you be coming with another request at a certain time? But we've got to do all this, I think.
Well, we did put a request in for vehicle that time and we just.
But it was in addition to your submitted budget, right?
No, it was along with the budget that we submitted for the year. We submitted for vehicles that we wouldn't, we have not received in vehicles.
So you had put that in your vote?
Yes, sir.
How many? I remember we talked about it, but I didn't remember.
A request for the funding of the request had been taken in total. And so that was one of the mileage of those budgets.
The budget was, was a pretty hefty budget. It's one of the biggest that we've ever had, a couple of $38,000. So we need, we needed to determine it somewhere and that was where a budget decided to determine. So.
Yeah, but I understand on the sheriff's, but vehicles, do you know how many? Do all the vehicles need the full sirens package and camera package?
They do not. It depends on where they're going to be assigned. If that's a patrol vehicle or a school resource vehicle, we equip them with everything. So it depends on the assignment, so that can, that can change. In no manner, every vehicle is a full emergency vehicle with lights and sirens. All of them may not have a camera. Camera is a good part of the cost of a vehicle. Over five years, the camera costs about $9,300. The upfront cost for the equipment is about $3,300. But then the rest of it is in subscription over the next four years.
The upfront cost for the uh, equipment is about thirty-three hundred dollars, but then the rest of it is in subscription over the next forty years.
Well, the quote we got commissioned for the lights package is about nine thousand, and the camera package is eight thousand, and then the radio, all the other, and similar, a hundred times, the total cost of all that's about twenty-two thousand per vehicle. The vehicles, the Tahoe, we got a good bid on at thirty-five or thirty-three. Those packages, that technology helps us so much.
The technology is, but like I said, only camera, you you're only gonna be on the cost for that in the current year for about thirty-three hundred dollars for the equipment, and then the rest of the camera cost is broken out over five years, so it would it would blend into a budget cost.
Is is the, um, so you mentioned Tahos, I mean, obviously, that's the majority of the fleet. I understand that the explorers are not as expensive. Um, and if you're looking to extend the fleet and resources, do you know, Cal, do you know the cost of a?
I think it's about two thousand dollar difference, it's not much of a difference, but then to the resale value on the Tahoe, there's a lot more. They can, county can easily sell these Tahos uh, that we take out of service, out of commission. Uh, they put them on gunbed, and they can get a great uh, deal on those Tahos that we have, whereas those uh.
Resale is just not a thought.
No, it's not.
What about, and we, and the fleets talked about a a cycling program to where it's, you're getting them out to where they're not to the point where you do have good resale, and getting them to these smaller departments that really need them, versus holding on to them until, like what you showed in your presentation, where they're just really.
That would require, right, that would require some regular replacement, and that would require additional funding for vehicles each year.
Is that a part of your fleet management plan?
That's what we we.
With those numbers?
We would like to see that, we would like to see instead of replacing one seventh of the fleet, which would be uh, a vehicle replaced every seven years, and about a seventh year, that vehicle is is pretty worn out. Maybe being able to reduce that to five or reduce it to four years, and then.
I'd I'd love to see an overall plan like that, that shows more long term, and how can you do it to where there's there's cost savings, but your folks staying there can.
Sure, and then we don't get any cost savings, because the first year of a vehicle is is primarily warranted. I mean, couple oil changes at the dealer, so there's not a whole lot of maintenance costs involved. Second year, you may be looking at brakes and uh, tires, battery. Uh, third year, you may be looking at some minor components in addition to those things, and but when you get beyond the fifth year, uh, you could be looking at some some major, some major costs that have to be brought.
Okay, sorry, I took off.
I was about to say, I would think, just based on my uh, understanding, is that if you have, if you have.
It conditioned me, sorry.
You're loud.
I I I would too, and I hope that when you you uh, come back with um, that five year plan, because, you know, the one thing that I hope that we all mindful of, and I'm sure we are, is that, you know, when you're speaking of a police vehicle, end use is totally different than a private use, uh, so therefore, you go, you're going probably need it to be more five year than than, or like, cause other than that, I mean, the after-bag guys are gonna have one use. Uh, and I'm being very candid, I'm not saying that to sound facetious, but um, it's been a lot of activity that I've I've observed, and I'm just being very candid with you. Um, you all have to do some real high speed, lot of high speed chases lately, and uh, and you gotta, you gotta stay up with these folks. So anyway, to make it long story short, I'm hoping that you that we'll get really to a lease purchase, uh, so that we could be able to have a turnover in the fleet, and not trying to manage what you all do, but this is just a recommendation, uh, so that we don't have to be concerned with paying for maintenance that supersedes the cost of what it what it takes in order to keep them. Am I making sense?
You make perfect. This this is a good presentation, it's a good plan, but this is something that needs to really be come forth with a plan at budget time, so that we can maybe get it on track, so that we don't have to come in here in the middle of other middle of the road, but I understand, it's been twenty twenty, it's been a good year, so let's uh, let's move on, move on.
Sir.
We we you got your car, let's move on with it.
Yes, sir.
All right, so the uh, the air support unit um, operates a uh, operates one aircraft primarily for law enforcement purposes. Um, commission scales, I I think you were mentioning the uh, when you were out there, and you saw the the unit leading to go and answer a call in Helena. Well, from Fultonville to Helena, it took them about nine minutes to get there, and when they got there, they were able to to get on scene, they were actually able to locate the suspect on their uh, on their infrared camera, and they actually were able to to talk the uh, Helena officers into it. So it's an incredible resource, not only for um, our county, but for all the cities within our county and surrounding counties as well. Because anything that affects Jefferson County has, or anything around us has the ability to affect us. So Vislink is a uh, video downlink technology that allows the camera that is equipped within STAR One to broadcast the video that is capturing to vehicles on the ground or to the cloud, where we can then be viewed by other officers or anybody who has the need to do so. Uh, if you look at the uh, this page that says IMT Vislink A B D S, I'll just walk you through a little bit, the uh, the main transmitter would be equipped in STAR One, and it would broadcast this signal to either handheld units or to tower mounted units on two of our radio towers. Uh, those two towers are situated, one would be Ruffin Mountain, and the second tower would be the uh, Oak Grove Tower in Oak Grove. The uh, signals from those towers would then be sent by fiber to a uh, rack mounted server, which would be either in uh, either in our metro area crime center or in county IT. And from there, that signal can can be transmitted to the cloud, where it it can be uh, downloaded by personnel with iPhone devices, it can be downloaded by personnel with access on uh, computer devices. Now initially, the uh, the quote that we had quoted only one tower, and when we when we looked at that one tower, it did not cover all of Jefferson County. So the portion of Jefferson County that was not covered, if you if you will look at the map view that I that I passed up, so the end portion of Jefferson County down around Oak Grove and down around Warren River was not covered by the one tower that we would have uh, at Ruffin Mountain. So in order to cover all of Jefferson County, we actually would need two towers. So that increases uh, the cost of the quote to approximately two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, when I first heard of this, it was around a hundred and fifty, but the second tower.
We we do, we do need a second tower to cover that, uh, to cover the whole of Jefferson County. So if if we don't, I mean, if we just stop short then, uh, those citizens down there would not have the benefit of this technology in STAR One.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
What exactly does um, this particular uh, technology that you're proposing to us, uh, can you give me the features of of what what uh, this does to help in fighting crime or anything else?
So the the features would be, um, as for instance, in a in a disaster scenario, um, STAR One will be able to fly over a much larger, much wider track of damage down a drone if ever could. So if there's a a ten mile track of of disaster, STAR One can fly over that area and live stream that imagery to anyone who needs to see it.
So is that live streamed back to folks on the ground, so that they can take action? Where where does that imagery go to?
That imagery will go to.
What is its destination?
The destination would be to uh, other personnel on the ground, uh, it could be to uh, political leaders who need to make a decision about the extent of of damage, uh, if if we needed to circle back and show you something else, we can we can also do that.
So so the controller here, the decoder, is required to each location where it needs to be sent to? Or is this is this at a central location?
That's how it's sent, that's how it's sent.
Okay, so then it can be transmitted to whoever, so EMA, I mean, it doesn't matter where.
The the signal can go to to whoever whoever needs access, we can grant that access if whoever needs to start streaming.
You know, I have a question, how long would that tower last?
Uh, I would have to get that answer for you, um, as far as a warranted period, um, I can get that answer for you.
When when we envisioned STAR One and its utilization for Jefferson County, uh, we had envisioned having partners that would share in the cost of the maintenance and as as we were utilizing it in Jefferson County, different municipalities, and in surrounding counties such as the Helena area, that they would help bear some of the cost of operations, has any of that come to fruition?
Uh, the city of Birmingham has partnered with us because they they've hired a a full-time pilot and assigned him to us. So the city of Birmingham has done so.
What about the maintenance of it, and the, you know, if if there, you have operational costs where you where you have fuel and maintenance, if you have an aircraft, you you set aside a certain amount each year for, based on the number of hours of operation of it. And when you when you do that, if if we're indeed gonna utilize this throughout the the area, we we need partners to help uh, share this cost, cause uh, this helicopter was 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 a was a reach for for the county commission when we did that, well, understanding how good it was gonna be for the community. But as as we do that, we need we need those partners to buy in and to take ownership and uh, because they're reaping the benefits from it.
Well, I mean, so far, I mean, one of the larger departments has has done is that, um, the the mechanism to get other other agencies, smaller agencies to do that, uh, I mean, we can explore that and see what that looks like.
Commissioner on our GIs, that's what we've done, uh, in order to provide that information to all the cities and the people who needed that information, we've partnered with Birmingham, Hoover, and other communities to help pay for the GIs program. Because in the past, you had, you know, Hoover doing their thing, Birmingham doing theirs, now we have the one GIs service uh, which we really worked hard to get that put together, and I think that's a very good plan, as Commissioner said, is to to go and work with the other communities in Jefferson County so that we can do this.
Well, you know, we we actually need another helicopter.
Well, or or depending on this equipment, as as more and more departments and EMA are buying into these drums that have this same capability, that's a lot cheaper than buying another helicopter. And if you have one in each one of these jurisdictions, then you have the availability of getting it out immediately with the first responders. So do we need another helicopter, and and what's the what's the lifespan of this helicopter and this equipment? I mean, there's, I mean, it's just, it's for budget and 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 future conversations.
No, but I I agree with you, Jimmy, because that was the question that I asked, um, of him when we got down to the ground. I noticed that Birmingham had two officers that basically took us around the area. Uh, but one of the questions that that I asked is one of the multi purposes for which you can utilize it for. So it's different when you're you're only utilizing technology in order to be able to prevent crime or solve crime, but when you're talking about, there were some other things, if you don't mind to share, uh, I was pleasantly surprised that even in uh, disaster uh, type scenarios where you all can use this aircraft to be able to get needed uh, materials that perhaps you can't uh, you can't utilize the ground? You can be able to get it from from the air, am I right?
It it can be equipped with a lift, and we can lift and more uh, equipment personnel from there, we do not have a lift at this point.
No, I know that, but I'm saying, since we're talking about it, that was one of the things I asked is, well, what else can you use this aircraft for? Beyond that, so that's why I'm agreeing with you, uh, Jimmy, that if if we are utilizing it for more than just, you know, we wanna just view the area that's been devastated, but we can use this to be able to take medical supplies, food supplies, those kind of things, you can use this aircraft, that if you can't travel on the ground, you have access to the same community, and you're doing it by air.
And and one of the big things that STAR One does is is it mitigates uh, vehicle pursuits, and it can make those much safer than what they currently are. Uh, so when when this aircraft is is over the uh, over a pursuit, they have the ability to see everything from their view, and from their view, they're able to call the pursuit, allow the officers on the ground pursuing the vehicle to back off, to ease up, and let them from from an altitude view where the service go, and then talk to officers and make the captain. Um, the the days of, with an aircraft like this equipped as it is, the days of having officers on the ground having to uh, pursue at all costs, we can mitigate that, and that can be mitigated for not only our agency, but for any agency that conducts a pursuit, and these often, these pursuits go from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, hitting a lot of places. So in that downlink technology will allow personnel on the ground, on their MDTs and their car, to see it. To be able to see it, and you know, know that STAR One has it, they have the service in view, and be able to do that much safer.
Now, the imagery and everything else, does that go to the MAX center? That, I'm sorry, Jimmy, that was my own, my.
Yeah, and and what we need to do.
It goes to the MAX center, does that, they can.
It will, it can go to the MAX there, it can go to a to a handheld uh, officer on the ground that has has that capability to
Okay.
to the vehicles, but what we need to do is it, we've been fifty minutes on this, and we need to move on. This this is a great uh, presentation that we need to have during our budgetary process. Uh, but the things that that we need need to work with now, we I think think we're.
We have permission to go forward with the spraying of the jails.
What, uh, spraying the jail, you good with that? And so we we.
Yeah, we can go.
Yeah, but I want the sixty, I want the sixty thousand per month, not the sixty.
Yeah, the sixty per week.
No, but isn't that what you said, is that the lowest, the lowest vendor agreed to go into the original, original price? I mean, I was listening very to you.
Right, so we'll we'll.
That's what he said.
Thank you.
And and to do that.
What did I notice, that there's been a lot of broken windows in jail.
It's clear.
They're blocking them.
Three.
We're, we're putting uh, metal across the windows to keep that from happening up there, but till we get all that done, we're gonna once that's done, then we'll go and replace the windows.
They're getting down to the cell phone, so that is.
I was, yeah, I was, I, when you drove by, I said, wow.
So so to be clear, hold on to this, so to be clear, what we've accomplished today is the spraying of the jail for COVID. And then, I'm sorry.
Cars.
And the cars, I wanted to be clear what we what we approved then, so that should be on on Thursday's agenda, right?
Yeah, we we will work those through the. So, and then there's the this this other link, we need a good overall presentation of this cost of this chopper, because it, you know, it's getting extremely tired, and and number two, uh, a good plan for, oh, the the question I had is, are we getting reimbursed by the state for your state prisoners or the Dings and the don'ts?
Well, they do, uh, go to the county commission, it doesn't come up, but we do put it forward, so we do keep up with that, so it doesn't come directly to us.
What what can I?
Uh, the state reimbursing for us housing, uh, the state inmates over at the jail.
Now, the county commission association, they've been working on a plan with the state, and and uh, you know, at some point, that hasn't been released yet, but there will be money coming uh, for that, because we have a lot of others already coming. Are supposed to be coming. Well, I would make.
We've been in talks, and I don't think there's a discrepancy about the amount that we're requiring in the amount that they wanna pay. So we will, we'll work some of that out.
Okay, we'll get it worked out.
Jerry.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Best day.
Thank you.
That's all, I'll share, hold on, uh, Jimmy, before we leave, there there is an ask based on UAB and a and a clinic site, um, vaccination site, so our cares, dollars, would that take care of them being at a site, that that site is to be uh, done done very soon?
I think.
Not U A B.
We can't get reimbursed from, uh, yes, from the feds. Uh, but once this package passes today or tomorrow, whenever they're gonna pass it, you know, then we'll have more information over the next.
Well, the reason I, well, uh, because the reason why I'm asking, this is in short order and U A B is not paying for it. And and what I'm making sure is that they're being asked to be on site, uh, to, uh, traffic control and security of of the, uh, of U A B's equipment, like this is next week, and that's the reason why I want to make sure we don't want COVID.
I got your stack, give Justin, your mom, so we can want that.
I see what.
That's true, so you guys share?
Yes, sir.
Division District Law.
Uh, no, well, that's that's for me and Joe. And I think. Oh, okay.
How would you go back?
I'll be on the bus.
How would you go back to work?
Well, I'm staying in work now. All right, so I'm sorry, thank you, Jimmy, I'm sorry, thank you for that clarification. Public Works Community Services and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, we have one item, which is buried contract in company. And this is for, uh, on-call sewer services and, uh, any you want to address this or something, come on. All right, this has been moved and properly settled, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
We have one item of of business, uh, there was a ten thousand dollar community grant that was given to, uh, Springfield Road Library, which is the second highest used library, uh, in the city. And so at any rate, uh, since due to the pandemic that they had closed, they're gonna now use those, uh, dollars for eight, eighty-eight compliant doors and touchless faucets. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood what that item was about. Do you have any questions?
Sure.
Has been moved and properly settled, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Twenty seven zero, but you just transferred.
Yeah, that's all it was, they had to repurpose the money since they've already received.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Josh.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, I have our Community Development Human Resource Services, uh, committee, we will be going to Dr. Hamilton of the Department for Community Development Services in North Coast Development. Talk to him.
He's gone. There he is.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we have eight items today, uh. First item is with E S A, our Engineered Services Associates for the Observation Inspection of the Macadori Storm Shelter Two in an amount of forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Blue.
Uh, number two is, uh, an agreement with with Houston, uh, general contractors for the construction of the Macadori two storm shelter, there's a pen and ink and shoot, the amount should be seven seventy-one, one sixty-three with two sixty-six-five, twenty-three, twenty-one remaining. Number three, um, is related to our general fund storm shelters. Uh, the first one is, uh, for, uh, site work associated with the storm shelter in an amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, fifty-one dollars. The second one is for site work in reference to the Gravesville, uh, general fund storm shelter. Uh, also for site work in the amount of eighty-two thousand, uh, thirty-four dollars. The fifth one is the People Development Center Amendment Two, uh, they've been delayed due to COVID and we want to extend it out into June the thirtieth of this year. I want to pull number six, uh, and we'll bring that back, we're still have a little issue to deal with. Number seven is a release of, uh, name for Mrs. Jeremia Watson, uh, she's paying for her, uh, mortgage. And the last item is with, uh, Macadori Area Fire Apparatus Cooperation Agreement, which will be with the, uh, Macadori Fire Department. This is just separate cooperation agreement that explains the requirements and legislation of the program, but we set aside three hundred thousand dollars.
What is the area flyer of the?
Second apartment.
Second. Your last. Oh, okay.
Flow violence, uh, one through, uh, eight, with the exception of number six.
Sir.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Commissioner, tonight?
I do, I just want to make sure that Miss, um, um, Delberto got that pen and ink change that you.
We get our.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, items one through eight, you have been first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have it, that is the end of my report.
Okay, our administrative infrastructure committee wrote the presentation, has seven items. Is there any, uh, pick to one, uh, you have? Well, motion and second for one through seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have county attorney, we have minutes from Commissioner Bean.
Yeah.
Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, county manager, we have a swagger contract amendment to include planning and zoning amendments. Increase the amount of swagger, live stream and vendor contract to include our planning and zoning.
Yeah.
So motion second, all in favor, say aye. Mr. Barker, you had something?
Yes, sir, uh, on the Grant Mill Road project, uh, there is a company looking to move in in the city of Irondale, a retail, a good retail company. And to do that, a portion of Grant's mill that the county does not maintain and is maintained by Irondale has some right of way easements in the county's name that needs to be quickly planned into the city of Irondale. And I apologize for this coming up last minute, but, uh, you listen work on the other side. We needed to get this through if we could so that it doesn't slow down the closing of that potential company.
I'll do that.
But Heather's got it, and Heather, the county attorney's office already.
Have motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pretty much. I have, uh, two items, I have one that's gonna be new business, it's a resolution, uh, that is actually going to, uh, appoint the Warrior River Authority Board of Directors. Uh, we had a death and to something that happened, uh, prior to my tenure, there were two others that came uh, up on the same day, so they were, there were three vacancies. What I've given you is I've given you the application for the for the new individuals and also the, uh, a reallocation of the time that each will have on the board, so we will not have, uh, two or more to come up at one one time, so we will be able to keep the continuity of the board. The new member, uh, two is reappointments, the new member is, uh, Aaron Holmes, which, uh, has been been out there in that area for ever, John Holmes or something, so, uh, I'd like to get that approved as new business, one item of new business.
Let me answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I have. I did, so this, is this the phone you've been talking about that let me, we have people to put on boards, put some boards? Uh, because I've never gotten a copy of this, I just thought it'd be.
Right, yeah.
The opportune time.
Yeah, that'd be good, I'll get you a copy of it, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and second for unanimous consent, consideration, one item of new business. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, no opposed, so we have a mo- motion for approval.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
We have, also, we have the city of Amherstville debris removal and monitoring M O U. Move the other. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. How many, how many, I I know we're working on this, do we have a good list of, uh, who is, who is not, can they get rid of you, you know, got?
Yes, sir, we do, and, uh, those have been refilled with the A C C A finishes from the U B N. We're sending them back out this year, so when they let me know. And we didn't have as many as I thought, currently in place, so, uh, you know, we'll work, we'll get all the traffic carried all the cities.
I think, uh, a good event was what happened this year. Said it wasn't, didn't win in the year, so.
Right.
Uh, Commissioner, not. All right, uh, finally, we have our, uh, let's, this, this can hear. Who will answer any and all questions you put forward on the findings. Uh, uh.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Uh, we have our home hall and usual demand report, item two, three, four, purchasing agenda report, purchasing session report, and first, end of commerce report. Have any questions on those items? The next item, number five, is our Jefferson County credit union, um, statement. Item six is our regions bank statement. Item number seven is our resolution to approve transfer for during in between operating and capital fund. This is something that is required as a part of the audit process. Do we have any questions related to the proposed transfers by the number seven?
Do I have a motion on one through seven?
No, that's. Which one through seven?
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Item number eight.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number eight is also a transfer, it is in accordance with the agreement that was signed back in November twenty nineteen. It allows the county to move more with, um, transferring eleven point two million dollars to the healthcare authority, um, for the individual care funds.
I'll move the other.
Check it.
Have a motion in the second, but this says this, uh, amends the master agreement, is there any substantive change in the?
We should.
This should actually bring the transfer, so we should probably change the language a little bit.
Change the language too, because that's misleading.
Well, that's what.
But but the document, if you recall, was revised, and so this is in accordance with the title of amended master agreement that was ultimately signed, so it's not amended for that, that's just what the document was titled.
Well, that, we we need to make that a little bit more explicit, they're getting the document, so. Do I have a motion?
Yes, because we previously several calls about, uh, we're not the only one looking at these, the general shot. And it is misleading, uh, county attorney, it is, but maybe we, we can, I don't know what we need to do, but it's definitely misleading.
So. Could we change it to?
We don't, we don't have to title that, we can say the master agreement for agenda purposes, but that's the formal title of the agreement, so we can, you can, we can do a pen and ink and color in accordance with the master agreement. That way, that way it won't be.
Yeah, that's, that's, that way you're not, puts up the radar, says you're changing the master agreement, what changes? Do I have a motion on the amendment?
No, that, as amended.
Back it.
Have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, we also have our, um, multiple staff development. And individual staff development.
This man will leave in second.
Go ahead. All in.
I was just trying to stop.
You're just trying to move this thing along, weren't you? All right, stay in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
All right, developmental services.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, first case of the agenda Z, that's twenty zero zero four six. This is down on the border road, it is adjacent to an existing garden home development. Originally, the developer proposed to do townhomes with this location. Then after they went through the planning and zoning commission meeting, they came back and amended their request to do garden homes. Uh, currently, they propose thirty-three lots. Uh, looking at the density of the adjacent development, it will be accessed from, um, the staff recommended that just with planning and zoning to limit it to twenty-nine units for twenty-nine lots, just to keep the exact density of it, it all went to the north. But the planning and zoning commission felt that the difference between the twenty-nine and the thirty-three was, uh, miniscule and went over the density that they proposed. Um, there were several people in attendance for this particular, um, request. A lot of those folks lived in that Rice Creek neighborhood from which the development would be accessed. Um, again, this would be something that would sort of mirror what they got going on. I think that then the developer have come to some sort of agreement about homeowners associations regarding to make this sign, regards to some, uh, items regarding the construction of the houses. Um, and again, that's that's items between them and the homeowners, so they're, or the developer and the homeowners association. And something that we sort of stayed back on simply because the county didn't require that in the Rice Creek development. Um, but that can be something that you may want to grill the developer on. Planning and zoning recommend, again, approval with the restriction of the number of lots for thirty-three. And with the stipulation that a construction interest be located off Highway fifty-two, subject to the Department of Road Transportation. Again, that's just to keep all the construction, um, traffic and equipment and heavy equipment and all this off of the roads in Rice Creek subdivision, uh, which were just recently paved. Uh, as a result of coming back after several years after the recession and coming to these older, um, developments that hadn't been completed at the time. And so like, and they've just finished their roadways and a lot of the concerns too, does the residents raise, had to deal with that access.
But that interest was lost the developer, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No, that.
Sorry.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Two thousand, Z, twenty, zero, zero, four, seven.
All right, this request is for a rather large property that's on the backside of the, uh, older subdivision in Fulton Dale. The, uh, subdivision in Fulton Dale is developing something that's in the county R one standard. But due to the size of the property and the proposed agricultural use that the, uh, uh, the the new property owner wants to use the property for, uh, we requested the A one zone. And let's some question beginning regarding the particular structure that he wanted to place out there for his home, because it is hard to unique.
Okay.
However, it will have to abide by the International Building Code, unless it would qualify as any other single-family residential dwelling within the category. Uh, again, rather large log, but he does want to have to do some planting of some trees, some some, uh, strawberries, that sort of thing, and I believe he's receiving some sort of U S D A loan to do all this. Uh, planning and zoning commission recommended approval with conditions to restrict all the mobile property, which would otherwise be allowed in A one zone. And it also restricts livestock on the property as well, which should curtail any sort of negative impact on the adjacent subdivisions there.
Yeah, I was, I was looking, it looks like a bargain menu.
Yes.
And this, I was actually.
Yeah, that was, that was what he, uh, requested beginning, really, exactly, so. And that's, I've been, I requested the architectural layouts and images and all that, just to be sure exactly what it was he was going for the property.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Z, twenty, zero, zero, four, eight.
Case forty-eight is a lot that is, that has split zoning on it. The portion that has the single-family residential, the R two zone, which you see with the yellow with the hash mark, was actually resolved at the time the subdivision to the north was developed. What has happened since is that portion has been conveyed to that property owner, the larger A one piece that you see out behind in blue. Uh, uh, in order to secure permits, we asked that the property owners take care of the split zoning interest, because that puts one, an easel permit, and two, could also put an easel, these sort of financing or anything else to go for, uh, this sort of property transfers, uh, in the future. Uh, the way that you planned for the area called for single-family residential development. Uh, however, when it went before the planning and zoning commission, they saw that most of the property was already zoned A one. They're gonna be fairly limited considering walls around them and spatial requirements that would be required for a lot of uses in A one. And went ahead and just recommended to rezone the entirety of the property to A one instead of what, uh, a single-family district that would more or less be required via the land use plan. A one will allow for larger accessory structures and this sort of thing that, uh, he wants to utilize on his property as well. And again, I will also state this property is at the end of a sort of private drive that's somewhat secluded from the rest of the single-family development along or within the area.
What is a sort of private drive?
A sort of?
That would be just there.
Well, it is a public ride, but what you see though, is and you'll, you see here on the graph here, there's only surfaces of very few properties and all the rest of them are done A one. So I mean, it's not like you're traveling through a single-family development to get here, nor do you have to travel through this property to get to every single-family residential subdivision. So it's, it functions as a private drive.
No, that.
I have a motion.
Sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Z, twenty-one, zero, zero, one.
This is out in the rural areas of western Jefferson County. It's a small, or relatively small piece, as it's surrounded by large corporate over tracks, it still retains. It still retains an industrial zoning, and, uh, the individual who owns the property now wants to, um, have residential use on it in the future. There's some questions about access, there's some questions about, you know, being surrounded by industrial zoning. But, um, all those, we've been talking with the property owner, he understands that as well, so.
Move. Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Z, twenty-one, zero, zero, two.
Several months ago, uh, the commission approved the request for garden homes for the larger property that is to the, that sort of surrounds this one. If you see on the screen that the site plan that was approved is surrounded or is, is highlighted in the purple. I didn't remember our colors, because this was before P and Z. So, um, what, what they wanted to redo now is this other property that is a lot of old right-of-revenge and incorporate that into the development. Um, and in that, in this sense, since the planning and zoning commission recommended limiting the number of lots to four, so that the overall density of development is equal to three point three units per acre, which is the same density of the development down the street, the Magnolia Road, see in the aerial image? So this will maintain the same density as that development once incorporated in with that larger piece. There wasn't any opposition at planning and zoning commission hearing, and I haven't received anything via email, phone calls, but, uh.
This is the one that had the, they reduced the number of units in the circle, we had the barrier on the backside issue. So now they're just taking those four and reducing them, I got it passed, but now they want to add four back on the.
Well, well, they took those four from that property, but they're adding additional properties to it. And this is for additional property that they're adding. So all in all of it.
Still decided to sell, which they tried to, the previous owner tried to get him to do it previously.
Okay.
And, um, so I'm.
You're good?
Second.
No motion in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-one, zero, zero, three.
Alright, this last case that we have, and then you see from the zoning map, it's sort of surrounded by the city of Gardale, and it will in fact have access to one of the other subdivisions in the city of Gardale. This piece of property is on C-two, uh, the portion to the north of it used to have like a community pool or some sort of recreational pool, and this was resolved at the same time as that. But it says the car dropped from the base to someone else. And, uh, he's requesting A-one zoning, he has, he wants to do a large, um, accessory structure for his RVs and boats and things like that. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval with, uh, some conditions restricting no one except for temporary emergency relief purposes. At least one acre shall be required for these lots, like animal or similar items. I don't believe he's required or he's desired to have that. Also, no more than twenty thou per acre shall be permitted, and any all commercial agriculture is prohibited. And that is in keeping in mind what the requirements of the city of Gardale would have, as he's accessing through that subdivision in Gardale.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now I want to know who is the, the person that goes out and counts the foul every week to make sure there's no more than one.
You know, y'all hired me as a great inspector, and I can send out a new form of complaint.
Alright, Jefferson County Board of Health, how's hope, how's your this week's day? Have a motion, Ben. Have a motion.
Does he come in?
I thought, I moved that in.
Okay, got any questions?
I got a motion in a second. You got any things to add?
No, it's, it's a good event we do every April, yeah, and, uh.
What are the things we're gonna be?
It's gonna be three.
Bestmar.
Three different sites, Bestmar, uh, Myrdale, and.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, I have, uh, human resources, we have the liver, the leader. Living Governor Lead Policy Group, five point five point eight, which came up a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I carried it over, there were some questions. My questions have been answered. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it then.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll move it for you.
I have a committee grant, have a motion?
Ben.
All in favor, please say aye. And I have a, a bunch of other stuff I need to put on for new business.
I'll vote for your name was concerned with all items.
Alright, and I, I've got a platinum for, uh, two point fireboard. Uh, we're doing the twenty, twenty-one AO, which is just a minor revision of the AO we did in twenty nineteen for budget. And I have, uh, four grants, for Jeff, for Tom Stoppard. I got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to United Way to help the people out on the Fulton Hill issue, and also a five thousand dollar Habitat for the same thing. So I have a motion for one through six on the new business.
Seven.
And I'd like to see what, what's, what's the AO revision.
That was the AO, I mean, we sent those out, I think they went out, here it is.
Well, I think this is the project.
That's, that's, now, you know, we did that in twenty nineteen. And all this is, is a revision of some of the dates that went in, uh, Lena and Zepo. And then what we did is, is range them sequentially so that they gotta go what date's next.
So date changes.
Date change. But there's no, there's no such. No, 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 it's all, it's all, but, yeah. There's no.
We could lay down Maryland, so they come out with the dates.
Yeah. I'm good. They just, it just folded up a little bit, basically. But they did watch some of the dates, like you had to have your budgets in on the next day, then, you know, county commission does this on the next day, and county manager produces it to the commissioner on the next day. And then they went through it, just did it sequentially. Okay. Move to the agenda, I'm sorry you didn't.
I'm, I'm getting it.
Have a motion?
Ben, second.
In a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Have a motion to move a motion to the agenda? So have a second, second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. And they've all been through the process, and they're all ready to go, so there's nothing that we have to, so that, that's my end of my report. Thank you.
Alright, IT development, um, first item under IT is a Microsoft, uh, three sixty-five subscription entitlement. This is, uh, basically a, a software that will look at, at how, uh, we're using, uh, Microsoft, uh, their products.
Well, they had, they were talking to, obviously, they were good for, hold the item.
Got a motion, and I, I. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and I have two, uh, uh, grants, uh, one, I'm, uh, supporting with among of Commissioner Tyson for the five face food pantry, and the other one is for Children's Hospital.
Uh, before we move, well, we can, we'll get it moving, but I wanted to add to one of those in the, in the, yeah.
Alright, you want to add?
Yes, I do.
Alright.
Uh, on the five face pantry, um, that's, obviously, is it serving your area, masking?
For, for my area?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, uh, assuming so.
Okay, because, uh, when I saw it, Fram and I were talking about it. So I wanna, I wanna put two thousand to this, and, uh, and then we'll do the necessary paperwork, uh, I'm sure.
But there's anything else to the current.
Yeah, okay, then, so we don't have to do anything more. So I'm gonna put two thousand dollars to it, um, so that, that we can, and, uh, and then Fram will take, take it from there. And then I'd like to be provided contact, because if it's what I think it should be, uh, then certainly we want to make sure that we, we have, uh, that support.
I'll move the amended item.
Alright.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The Children's Hospital grant.
Hold that.
Second.
Seven.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's the conclusion.
Not get out the food thing, but I'm still in the tornado, I believe, here.
You know, I'd like to go back, because Mike, I still read, I think it's just step down.
Okay.
On this, on this thirty-three fifteen on the road, y'all ran through that pretty quickly, I didn't get a chance to address anything on it. Uh, that's where they were doing the four lane, there on Morgan Road, just sat, just sat above. Hey, I was looking at, as it went through, I was actually reading the letters of opposition to, did any of the personal commissioners, uh, get a chance to look at that and see the, see what their neighbors were wanting?
No, but I was gonna say, Mr. President, let me ask you this. But we will only initially approve the main court to go to, just to this type of a vote here. Oh. Isn't that what we're doing?
Yeah, it's, it's something that would, that this would probably have been the right venue to, to check this market margin.
Sir.
Oh, I'm looking back at this thirty-three fifteen.
That's some kind of feedback, Mr. President, outside, you need to do a, uh.
I am really, um, there's a lot of, a lot of opposition. Was there anyone in the zoning went ahead to approve it?
Yes.
Oh, overall, this opposition for the entire subdivision?
A lot of the opposition began because they were requesting townhomes.
Okay.
And now the opposition is, is, there's still something that exists, but it's sort of foiled down a little bit, just simply because what they're wanting to do is gonna mirror what their development's gonna be. Um, a lot of the opposition had to do with, again, construction traffic that may come through. Uh, they were concerned about whether or not the housing stock was gonna be, uh, similar or in the same fashion as their development, since, since it will be accessed through their development as well. Because it's, it's on a stub street, so it doesn't access directly to Morgan.
It's Morgan to go for, there's traffic will travel through their subdivision.
Correct. Correct. When their, when their subdivision was created, they, they put a stub street down the, the vacant property to the south, and that's where they wanted access from, that stub street.
And this was originally like townhomes, but they changed it.
They changed it to garden homes, yes.
And did, did the, did the residents know that they made that change?
Yes, that's correct. And again, all the opposition, I always give you guys, I give y'all everything I receive through the duration of the case. And again, they, there was something that came back with some requests or, or some concerns, again, about primarily construction traffic, which I think P and Z tried to address that with the recommendation that they have a construction interest directed for Morgan. And, um, also the density restriction that P and Z had put on would be something similar to what's there now. Again, going back, staff looked back and said that twenty-nine lots would probably be, would be identical to the density. But again, P and Z found that it would be miniscule to erase the four lots.
And I guess the most troubling letter that I had was the one that was signed by the homeowners association.
Correct.
And all, all of the members that were there, all.
And I believe that that letter was addressing when they, when they had requested for townhomes. Yes.
Anyway, I have an opportunity to, uh, to call down and, and to check and see between now and then. But, eh, what we need to do in, in the future, we need to make that more, uh, visible. Because I was in the process of reading the letters, uh, to, to see, see what the opposition was, and it was already gone. So, uh, let's, uh.
Well, it's a public hearing, and we moved it to that, and we, we, we.
Alright.
We can, we can.
Aggressively at that time, that's.
And then you could draw up some words, we.
Yeah, it was. I heard you say it was, what I, what I heard was, or what I thought I heard was, this was a townhome development, and they moved it to a garden home development. And that thing that keeps everybody's eye, but.
Yeah. And like you said, a lot of, a lot of their concerns was addressed, and the only things that, like I stated earlier, that they need, that, that they have concerns over are things that, you know, we need to kind of extract out of the developer. Which he said at planning his own committee, he, he would meet and, and, and go over some things like signing on the same homeowners association, um, dealing with, uh, with the, uh, type of construction that the houses would be, and all that, and, and try to keep it in harmony. But again, from a county standpoint, from, we didn't require that of their development, I don't know that that's appropriate for us to require that, require those private restricted covenants on this development that, that's something that they can still.
The, the situation's changed out there.
Right.
There's, it's now a, a four-lane highway. And, uh, it's, it's very difficult to, to go up and down that road now. And, uh, I, I'd like the opportunity to, to look in and, and, and to see what an additional, uh, you're doubling the ingress ingress from that subdivision, right?
Correct.
Uh, and it's okay on, on that four-lane highway cap.
Yes, sir.
So, so everything loo, everything looks good there. The homes that are in the, right, right street subdivision are very, uh, they're not as small.
Correct.
And, uh, would these homes be at the same value?
Again, that's, that's a question for the developer.
Well, and.
Once, once, what, what you get, once we get to these sorts of.
If we're going to approve the site.
Well, like, I would just.
They should be.
Correct. I, again, I would just caution that we've kind of told a zoning line with those sorts of things, because you don't want to step on anything that could be considered a violation of fair housing.
But like, at the same time, you go more.
I understand.
Eleven hundred square foot, one square foot house with eighteen, nineteen hundred.
Correct. Correct, yes. I mean, I agree, but like I said, I just try to.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. That's, that's all I was going to do.
So, Mr. President, then let me ask this question. Are you asking in this time that we delay the item until you have further investigations?
No, this is a public hearing. Public hearing.
And so it's already, after the time of Florida.
Of what was going on. And I, I can, I can ask the court, but.
Thank you. There's no being anything else.
Okay.
Well, Steve.
Man, get out, man, thank you.
Well, at least you had your mask.
Oh, damn it, we, we get too comfortable again.
You know, we used to say, God bless you, but now we say, oh, God. Alright, that brings us to the end of this meeting, I think. Uh, I'd like to begin with, uh, Mr. Tuck.
Yes, sir.
This is a, this is a reason Alan Collins showed up to the. And, and I see your lovely wife, who has been supported, and your wonderful daughter. So you have something to say?
I have something to say today, and, and again, I want to say that, uh, after thirty-four years of public service in many different jobs throughout the years, and ten years here at the county, that I want to announce my retirement this year. Uh, I don't have a date set, but I just want to give you a heads up that I do plan to retire this year. I've got a couple of projects I'm still working on, I want to get those done. But, uh, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you, you know, and, and I think what I enjoy about this job the most, I love my job. And what I enjoy about this job, we work as a team, you know, the commission, the county manager's office, the executive team, county attorney's office, you know, we, we, we've done this. And when you look, you know, especially this year's been a very difficult year, uh, with the pandemic. And our employees, they came to work and continue to work. We continue to provide the services. We had to make major changes. We had a, you know, we had to restructure the way that we did business so that we could provide the services. And, and, uh, thank God that, uh, we didn't have to furlough or lay anyone off or, or do a reduction in force. Uh, according to governing magazine, there was over a million employees from county and city governments that were furloughed or reduction enforced this year. We didn't have to do this. Last year, with the leadership of Angela Dixon and with the help of Travis, who has always stepped up to the plate, we're able to pass a structural balance budget. We're gonna do that again this year, and we have strong reserves. And so we're, we're in financials and good shape, so it's a good, it's a good time for me personally to retire, but also it's a good time for the county. We have all of our leadership team in place. We have hired some great people throughout the country, from Oregon to Wyoming to Texas, Georgia, Florida, and even within, you know, the Birmingham area. We've had some great people. So our leadership team is in place. They know what they're doing. Our directors, they know what they're doing, and, and, uh, this is a good time for me. Now, my wife, I have here Teresa and Stephanie. She's been after me for years from the time, and, uh, you know, and I've been put in problems. So she's here to verify that I'm gonna go through with it today. But, uh, seriously, it's, it's, it's been great, and, and I feel very fortunate that the county is where it is today. It's a good time in my life to retire, but also it's a good time for the county, because we've got the folks in place. We actually consent to bring, now, remember, uh, Judge Smith, he asked me several years ago, he's, he said, Mr. Tullis, are you gonna stay with us until the consent? Now, remember, uh, Judge Smith, he asked me several years ago, he's, he said, Mr. Tullis, are you gonna stay with us until the consent decree ends? I said, and I told him, I said, Judge, I'm gonna make that commitment that I'll study. Unfortunately, on December twenty first this year, we exited the consent. And so, we, we're in, in good shape, and I'm excited about the prospects. But, again, thank you, it's been an honor to work here, and, you know, when you look across the country and see what other cities are going through and counties, we're very fortunate, and it's because we're all working together. But uh, I just want to give y'all that update, whenever I get a date set, I'll let you know, but just to give you a heads up.
So, that being said, Mr. President, well, obviously, I've been here over two years, and I think you and your staff have done an amazing job. Uh, you said it just right when you started thinking about, uh, where we are as a county, uh, and going through a pandemic. And I can say, one of the things that, uh, I'm probably the most proud of is that we've been proactive and not reactive. Um, I, I can't say enough for your leadership in that regard. Uh, obviously, that's gonna be, um, an interesting dynamic for the city, uh, city county. Um, but, but I will tell you, just with the two and a plus half years of me being here, that uh, it's been always good to know that at least if we couldn't come up with the answer in the meeting, we found a way to make it work. Um, and I could hear a little tremble in your voice, so I'm gonna just say, that Ms. Patelis, I said to myself, maybe perhaps you should have, um, um, I don't want to just be taken out of the wrong way, so I'll just say, I know you recently, you all had an experience with the pandemic itself. And uh, sometimes it makes you wonder, like, wow, did it take that in order for you to wake up and say, hey, you know, there's a life after this? You know, so at least you're young enough to be able to enjoy your family, and uh, I don't, you know, know if you're gonna really retire, most people, uh, like yourself and your wife, it's kind of hard to retire, to do nothing. Uh, but I won't tell you how much I really appreciate you, thank you, and I think the residents of Jefferson County appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Actually, she's got a lot to do this for, so, you know, I'll do the to do this, and then I'll, I'll look and see, you know.
Yeah, then she'll be calling us back going, hey, y'all do that mistake.
Mr. Mike?
You know, we hired Tony, Joe and I, we, we've been here through, through Tony's entire tenure. And uh, when we first started, um, we lost the occupational tax. We had to deal with cook for rain, we had to deal with the nursing home. Or we had to deal with tornadoes over the successive years. And the twenty eleven was, any tornado is terrible, but that particular one covered so much area, and it was horrendous and lost supply, is, it, it, it changed what we did. Oh, it changed how we act, how we react to the certain, certain circumstances and situations. And we've worked together to get that. We've worked through the bankruptcy, we've worked through the sewer crisis, we've worked through the consent decree, and if, if you were to check all of those lists, Mr. Tullis, uh, you were very prominent in getting us through each one of those, and we appreciate your service, and it will not go unnoticed in the history of Jefferson County. Thank you very much, and we wish you and Theresa and your family the best. It's very sweet that we say this, is that, you know, through our entire tenure, you've been here, so it will be a challenge. And uh, but uh, one thing about life is life is real with changes, and this will be a good change for you. And uh, this county will, will move forward and, and continue to prosper because of the foundation that you and this commission have laid. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Commissioner, and uh, you know, it's, when we, we changed the form of government, two thousand eleven, county manager form of government, and I was here forty days, and then we filed for the bankruptcy. And uh, as you know, I'm a brick and sand, a lot of, a lot of my friends said, you know, you put a brick in charge, and no one's gonna file for bankruptcy, so, you know, but uh, it, it was, we had a lot of challenges, we worked together through the years, and, and uh, I've been a lifelong resident of this county and will continue to be, just uh, uh, it's a sad day for me, because I love my job.
But you're not lonely, you talk like this your.
No, 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 it's, it's, I'm, I'm hoping to hear a little while, so.
Well, one, one thing you said is that last year was a, a rough year, and you were right, but the whole tenure that you've been here hasn't been really that long, you know, over, over the years. And Jimmy has enumerated all that, I mean, but one thing I'll say to him is that, do it all. You're staying, you're right down the line, you wasn't all over the place, and you were a guide in life, and that stability to help us all do what we have to do, and all your staff, if you were, you never were, but even in your, when you had your goals, you were still right there. So, that's the one thing I appreciate about you. And, and number two is, you know, we all have, I think John Wooden said it, when uh, we have your reputation and your character. And there's a little bit of a difference, your reputation is what other people think, but your character, who you are, and your top notch, and everybody, I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well, they've kind of taken all the thunder, but uh, there's a little last, I guess. Um, they've mentioned, you know, everything that you went through with, with you guys, and, I mean, just the change in government alone, um, uh, had to be a difficult process. And then the bankruptcy, and, and all the things that have already been mentioned, I mean, going through your cancers, you have a lot of battles, and so that really makes you a warrior. And uh, uh, being, being the, the new folks, um, appreciating that warrior mentality, but, but still doing it from a very logical and steadfast standpoint. And uh, appreciated your public service, you know, going back to your days in Hoover as well, and, and I know the people of, the citizens of Hoover miss you when you left, and, and will miss you uh, when you're gone from the county. Thank you for missing, you know, and uh, through the years, in the early years, I, I almost lived in legal office, I mean, it was just, you know. And I remember going to legal office and asking them a question about the reform of government, and they said, well, I really don't know, uh, this is all new to us, and so, but, you know, I don't spend that much time in legal anymore. But through the, you know, leadership of, uh, Theo Lawson and Sean over there, their leadership helped us out, and, you know, we finally got a consent decree, which was, you know, Jefferson County committed to doing the right thing. Uh, in nineteen eighty two, we finally did. You have a legacy, you have a legacy along with you too, you really have a legacy of what, what this county has come through, so that makes you a warrior too.
Maybe that's why Joe is good, and, and you know what, Jimmy, before, before we, we close, um, I will say this, um, as being a wife, I've, I've been keeping it, Jimmy, and you can kind of sit back just a little bit, if you don't mind.
You see her?
Oh, absolutely, because I've been watching her the whole time, um.
Oh, she's got a big smile on her face.
Yeah, well, but, but I also saw her over there wiping her eyes too, okay? Let, let me say this to you, uh, Tony, um, I'm clearly aware at fifty that uh, you come with a family, you leave with a family. And uh, and, and that's the reason why I said, I really hope that, that you're going to take this time to enjoy your family. Uh, and with when Joe and Jimmy started talking about the various places you've been, when you sign up for politics, of course, you know, being a judge, she had to be elected too, swear and tell on your family. Uh, and, 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 and you gotta keep that together, but you're young enough and you survive enough to know how to enjoy one another at this stage in your life. Uh, I'm clearly aware from having adult, adult daughters, that it's a beautiful thing to have them at home, it's another thing for you to start living, start enjoying life. Um, and, and so, I'm glad that you're just young enough to recognize the seasons, and, and then being able to, to smell the roses and appreciate your family, because that's all you got when you leave out of here, that's all you're gonna have. Uh, Joe was talking about, you know, your reputation and your character, uh, but your character and the family that loves you, they're not into the county manager, they're not into all these various positions you've had, they love you. And so, I'm glad that you read the tea leaves finally, so that you can reward your wife to be her husband. And so, that's why I looked at it, because sometime people think, you know, you're making selfish moves, but that's, that's a, that's a great reward, so that she can enjoy, you all can enjoy one another. So, uh, I would say it's probably interesting how it probably shaped out, uh, but sometime you just have to slow it down and say, you know, let me enjoy my family, you know, and uh, so my dad, um, uh, we seventy six years years, so somebody should be telling him that, but he's still not hearing that. Uh, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you, and I did want to say congratulations again.
Thank you.
Uh, Jimmy?
Commissioner Tosh.
Uh, I've already talked to, uh, Tony, so I really have a whole lot to say. Um, I, I wish him the best of luck, I know he's going to have a blast, uh, being retired. And I know, uh, as being human beings, we are selfish, uh, because we don't want to see even suffering people, we don't want to see them pass, and then when people retire, we don't want to see them leave, you know, to actually spend time with their family. So, uh, I had built a relationship with Tony, I feel, uh, before I came on the commission. So, I know that, uh, people had their own opinion of becoming on the commission of what they thought I could be, but I felt like Tony knew better than anyone on the commission because of the, um, conversations that we had had, um, before I came, became a county commissioner. I, 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 I appreciate him giving me a chance and an opportunity to just care and, and, and be the conscience of the, uh, commission. And to try to take care of the, the citizens within Jefferson County. And he gave me that opportunity, and I feel like, and, you know, he just gave me a balance chance, and that's, we want to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, everybody knew the president's meeting is the.